Order of Union County Council on this Tuesday, February the 12th, 2024. I'd like to have everybody to stand for an invocation followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Last prayer. Having to follow, we thank you so much for this day and I just want to thank you for every person that comes here and is concerned and loves this county. Lord, we just thank you so much for allowing us to be a part of such a great county, Lord. And we just pray that you'll just lead us and guide us as we go through this meeting tonight and that everything that we do here will be pleasing to you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
All right. Salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to our clerk for roll call.
District one, Danny Wright.
Present.
District two, John Lynn Willington. District three, David Sinclair.
Present.
District four, Annie Smith.
Present.
District five, Carolyn Rutherford.
Present.
District six, Tom White.
Present.
And District two, John, may be coming in here any minute.
There he is right there.
Oh, he made it? Okay.
He ran to the restroom.
All right, good. We worried about him. I know that's a trip. At this point in time, in your package, the clerk sent out the minutes from our January meeting. Do I have any alter alterations, amendments, or deletions of this?
Motion to accept.
I have a motion to accept, Councilman Flood, second by Councilman Sinclair. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, like sign. And it is unanimous. We'll go over to the service awards real quick. The first service award we have is for Ms. Sandy Clayton for five years of service with Union County. And she's better known as the face and the voice of Union County because when you call the switchboard, this is who answers the phone while she's doing counts, payables, and receivables. So we thank Sandy. And our next is for Rick Garing for five years. He works at our detention center. And Rick's a great guy and I know we enjoy having both of them working with us. Okay. With the service awards away, now it's time for me to introduce our Lockhart Power friends. First, and I'll do this, ladies first, Ms. Adrena Powell Baker and Brian Stone with Lockhart Power. They have a presentation for us tonight. So, Adrena, go right ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. How's everyone today?
Good.
Good. So, in 1963, on any given Saturday, pick one, there was a six-year-old girl and a four-year-old boy who rode with their mom to the town of Lockhart. This is Lockhart and this is a parking lot. Now, this is what it looks like now. That six-year-old girl and her four-year-old brother sat in their mom's car pretty much an hour or so while she shopped for groceries in a building that used to sit here. She finished shopping for groceries, then she went to the back of the store and filled Granny's prescriptions. When she was done filling those prescriptions, she went to the middle of the store, to the food counter, and bought two ice cream colors, one vanilla and one chocolate. She left the building, went back to her car, and the two kids in the car were happy to get the ice cream cone. The next thing to happen was they drove around the building to the laundromat where she finished up that morning washing the family's clothes. So, those two children were me and my brother. Well, I was six and he was four. So, I chose 1963 because that's actually my first memory of the town of Lockhart. Some of you may remember that building. I think some of you may be close to my age and you remember that building. But Lockhart was a vibrant town. It was an economic development contributor to the county of Union. And we want to bring it back to being that same economic development asset. So, for the next 10 minutes or so, we'd like for you to go with us to reimagine Lockhart from this to this. And it can happen through partnerships, through hard work, through a lot of vision. It can happen. Lockhart Power has been a part of Lockhart's vision for as long as I can remember. We have a lot of legacy in Union County and in Lockhart. And we want to share with you several things today. So, this is why we're here. We want to emphasize the economic development case for housing development in Lockhart and show the benefits to Union County. We also want to talk about the value of public-private partnerships, in particular, the unique partnership that Lockhart Power and Union County has had over a number of years. And then we want to request Union County's help to spur economic development in Lockhart. And so you may ask a question or a deep question. Why does Lockhart care? Why should Lockhart Power care? Anybody? Why should Lockhart Power care about housing development in Lockhart? Anybody?
Michelle in Lockhart.
She's got the PowerPoint. So, yeah, several reasons. The town of Lockhart is our home. We have, like I said, over 100 years of legacy in the town of Lockhart. And most of our employees and majority of our customers are in Union County. They work here, live here, and play here. Our industrial customers need employees that live close to home. And then the other reason is it's just the right thing to do. That's why we care. Community sustainability is a part of our DNA and a part of our values. So, any questions before or keep moving? So, just to pivot a little bit, I wanted to talk a little bit about the unique strategic partnership that Lockhart Power and the county of Union has. And all of these projects that you see here to the left, all the projects and the tax revenues that Lockhart does infused in Union County are transformational. There's a mutual financial value to Union County as well as Lockhart. And I want to bring your attention to the new capital investment announced since 2009 by Lockhart Power. It's over 23 million. That's just what we've announced. That doesn't include the investments we've made that we didn't announce. We've also contributed another, over $2 million in utility tax credits to go toward industrial park development. Pretty much every industrial park in Union County has benefited from our UTC credits. That includes the Tracis Industrial Park, which we will never serve. It's not in our assigned territory, but because Union County is important to us, we donated money for that park development. We've actually come very close to $17 million in property tax payments. And the last one on the screen is Midway Green Industrial Spec Building, probably one of our most prideful projects with Union County with the creation of over 300 jobs and announcement of over $100 million in capital investment. So, those are the examples of mutual financial value. We've also contributed to a number of quality-of-life and community development projects, which we contributed financially, but we didn't necessarily benefit financially to them. And you can see them there. We are soon to make an announcement of a donation to the medical center, the new medical center that's being built. I mean, as you can see there, most of those are quality-of-life attributes. And most relevant to our presentation today is the boat ramp in Lockhart and the two flat stack trails in Lockhart. Not only do we contribute financially, but we encourage our employees, managers, and employees to provide income service to Union County. So, you'll see our employees and managers serving on different boards, participating in advisory committees, advisory boards, and commissions, and what have you. And then most recently, we put a lot of energy, energy and effort into the Lockhart Tomorrow Committee. So, why the town of Lockhart? Why would we want to build a subdivision in the town of Lockhart? A lot of reasons. As we were walking through this presentation and looking for the value of the town of Lockhart, we found a lot of things that we knew, but we found some things or uncovered some things that we probably wouldn't have thought of to talk to you about today. But suffice it to say, around 2017, Lockhart Power decided as a company, and spearheaded by our president, Brian Stone, a housing initiative. We knew that our customers, our large customers, were looking for people that wanted to live close to home. And so we started this housing initiative in 2017. We brought together local elected officials, we brought together brokers, we brought together industry people in a summit in Lockhart on our campus. And from that summit, those folks validated that housing was a huge need even in 2017. That was validated in 2021 by a study that was done by the Development Board that also further indicated that we needed housing in Union County, in all corners of the county. Union is 15 minutes from Lockhart. Lockhart is close to all of our large employers. And not only that, but in terms of economic growth, most of the time we think about the Spartanburg area as a growth corridor, or I-176 as a growth corridor. But what about the Charlotte MSA? Lockhart is on the cusp of a growth corridor with Rock Hill area and Charlotte being only about an hour away. We have access to two rivers, Broad River and Pacta River. And then with the availability of new housing, new modern homes, there's a great opportunity for growth there. So, Lockhart is poised. Strategic partnerships are important. Lockhart has a ton of them. Some of them, they developed on their own. Some of them happened organically because of the natural resources in the town. But as you can see, there are some heavy hitters there. And then they have a corporate champion in Lockhart Power. We're willing to advocate for the community. We're willing to put our money and resources and power behind helping the community grow. So, I'll stop right there and let you ask any questions. So, the question then becomes, why Lockhart? Why not Lockhart? Instead of being on the negative side of him, we go to the positive. Why not Lockhart? So, in terms of what the subdivision will look like, we've actually partnered with a local engineer, Brian, do you remember his name? Blue Water. And the young man is from Union County. We partnered with him to put together kind of this layout. And it may be a little fuzzy here, but I think you can see it pretty well in your hand now. So, just to help you get your bearings, this is Chester, Chester County. This is the town of Lockhart. This is Highway nine going towards Jonesville. And as you pass the intersection headed towards Jonesville, the interest of the subdivision is maybe a quarter of a mile up on the right. And the line here separates what we consider phase one of the subdivision, which is about 10 homes. We found a builder who is open to building two homes to start with. And he'll have a spec home on board after the two houses are sold. He'll have two houses in construction at the same time, and then a spec on the board. These are sitting on quarter acre lots, each one of them. The homes are somewhere between 1,400 and 1,500 square feet. And the last phase of the development will depend on the demand for houses. And the size will also depend on the demand for houses. I'll stop there and let you comment something.
Adrena, I'd like to, I'm going ahead and to Lockhart. We're looking at all this and maybe potential earth, hope, block coming from Charlotte, Rocky. Have we incorporated multiple children into the government of Union? Or are we willing to try to do something with the old Lockhart spin? Is that what you're thinking about?
So, that's, thank you for that comment. And that's certainly something we can discuss later. I appreciate that very much. We do expect, to your point, we do expect that a housing subdivision like this will transform the town of Lockhart, bring more people in, bring more opportunity for economic development in. So, through this transformational partnership, three things have to occur. We have to deploy capital to construct water, sewer, electric, and road infrastructure into the subdivision. As a result of that, growth will be spurred in the town of Lockhart. And quite honestly, we can save the town of Lockhart from demise. The way we do this through the partnership is threefold. Lockhart Power has already purchased the land. We will pay for engineering. We'll pay for clearing, greving of trees. We will take ownership of project management. And we, of course, will construct the electric power for sure. The county's contribution would be to construct the entrance. Once the entrance is constructed, extend water and sewer to the subdivision and then turn it over and donate it to the town for maintenance. And then the town of Lockhart would accept through annexation the subdivision and the water and sewer, which will subsequently become the property of the town.
Quick question. As far as the infrastructure goes and what you're looking at for the county to assist you with, is that going to be something that will be done in phases, just like the buildout of the houses? Like, just the first phase would receive the first infrastructure?
It would actually connect the town of Lockhart's water and sewer system, Lockhart's sewer system, to the subdivision.
Yeah, I knew that. I was talking about how much depth, how much depth into the subdivision.
Yeah, so, that's a good question. So, what we're requesting is the initial phase one, is extending water and sewer into phase one, just that first, I think it's six houses on one side and four on the other, it's roughly 500 feet. That's it. So, we don't get into it here in the PowerPoint, but one key premise to this is that there's, you can't do a market study for the housing market in Lockhart as we did for Union County, which was challenging enough back when we did it with the Development Board. So, there's no way to know what that demand is until you go build a few houses. And that's, not having that infrastructure there is a huge impediment to building the first house for anybody. That's why nobody else would do this, and that's why we're stepping up. So, we're looking for that first part. Once we know the demand's there, then, then, then great. And then we can make a decision that based on the demand, is there a demand? We're sure there will be. And then, as the developer, unless someone else applies out for the development, then we would, we'd extend that from there on. So, we don't envision any other, as far as water and sewer, we don't envision any further of that.
So, we also envision the road entrance to be about 500 feet into the subdivision. So, not all the way to the end. So, then, the benefits to Union County are multiple. We create a growing working class in the town of Lockhart. Of course, property tax revenues for Union County are evident, and we have more people moving in. And then for the town of Lockhart, there's a great benefit through the annexation process to create more revenue from the state. And again, Lockhart's in a potential growth area for the Charlotte MSA. And then we help jumpstart housing in Union County. So, here's the ask of Union County. And just to kind of review what I said on there, we're asking that county of Union provide an entrance, road into the subdivision. We're asking that Union County extend water and sewer infrastructure into the subdivision and donate it to the town. And we've estimated the cost to be somewhere around $400,000 for all of that. Now, that's just an estimate. We don't have engineered, an engineered study done yet, but those are the estimates.
What questions do you have?
I read where people who live in Charlotte are moving as far as H to get away from the hustle and bustle of Charlotte. Are you anticipating perhaps that similar type of growth?
It's called?
That you want to get away from that?
It's called sprawl. And we do anticipate some of that. I don't know if you guys go to Rock Hill through McConnell's ever, but right in the middle smack dab of McConnell's is subdivision. And it just popped up. And those people are not from McConnell's. Those people are from the Charlotte area, Rock Hill area, somewhere from the Chester area. So, yes, answering your question.
Adrian, what did you say the size, estimate size of the house is?
Somewhere between 1,400 and 1,500 would be the average.
Do you know what that layout is, or measure it back there?
Um, Brian, do you know the layout is?
We're visioning a three two, and they'll be different. As far as the physical layout will be different models, we're looking at three by two half as a scale.
You want to move down?
No, I'm good where I'm at. What I'm seeing, what I'm seeing is a lot of houses of a larger size.
Gotcha.
Going on the books now as far as construction.
So, that's a great, let me take off for a sec. So, that's a great point, actually set ways. And one other thing we wanted to focus on, which is, this first phase, we've been hypersensitive to the cost of the house. So, for the first few houses in particular, you know, no one's built a new house in the town proper of Lockhart in, I don't know, there might be deception, as far as more than half a century. So, again, there is no market comp. And you might ask, well, why is that? Well, you probably know the answer, which is, well, no one else has built one. The property values on general down there aren't very high. And to build a new house, and we have lots inside the town, you know, that we'd sell for a thousand bucks, 1,200 bucks, something like that, for rental housing. We love that people do that. No one's doing that either. So, this is the only approach that we've identified towards housing within the town of Lockhart. We targeted this specific parcel. It may not be clear on that map, but could you pull that map up, please, Adrian? It's like the fourth, first slide, I think. So, on the top, up is not north, on this left is really pretty much north. So, on the top, you may be able to see the grids, but the entire length of that top, from right to left on the top side, that is, that border is the entire town of Lockhart along that side. So, all those parcels, there's parcels all the way along there on the right side of the other part of the valley. So, the reason we selected that parcel and targeted is because that was the closest to all the infrastructure in the town of Lockhart. One of the premises of this project is we want to support the town, not just in adding new houses, but support the town's utilities. I assume you know, you may not know, that Lockhart has its own water and sewer utilities. It's a tiny little town. You know how hard it is to keep costs under control when you've got, you know, a few hundred customers and there's no growth for decades? It's impossible. So, one key premise was, it was very important to us to support the town's utilities as well as housing the population. So, we, you know, we could have done it for less expensive, for less money somewhere else. We could have gone with septic and gone with well water, whatever. We refused to do that. So, we located as close as humanly possible to existing infrastructure within the town, so that we absolutely minimize the cost of extending the infrastructure in order to minimize the cost of the lots, which minimizes the cost of when people buy the houses, so that it's as likely as possible that as many people as possible will afford these houses. And we're targeting, we're targeting, as a target, we're targeting the initial purchase price for the first house of $199,000 for a brand new, extremely energy efficient, modern, craftsman style house on almost a quarter of an acre in a brand new subdivision in Lockhart, which we are very confident in selling. We won't know until we do it, but that's what we're doing.
Gang, this is a presentation for county council, and I apologize for letting this get a little bit out of control. But what I want to do is, I want to cut anybody off because this is preparatory to us. And just in a council, we're not even going to act on this tonight. So, if I could just hold on, that way we can all get our thoughts together when we have all the answers, whatever council decides to do.
Thank you.
Councilman Flood, you have a question?
I just wanted to know where Lockhart Drive marries in Highway nine in relationship to this proposed subdivision.
Lockhart Drive?
I mean, Highway nine and Highway 49?
No. Lockhart Drive comes up by the old school and comes out on tonight. Where is that?
So...
Right over there.
Um...
Yeah, to the left.
The school is in this area.
Yes.
And Lockhart Drive circles around in front of the school. So, before we, before I finish up, are there any other questions? Any other points of clarification? So, when I first started, I mentioned that there were a few things that we wanted to give advice today. And one is an economic development case for housing in the town of Lockhart. We wanted to show the benefits to Union County, the value of public-private partnerships. And then finally, we wanted to make the request of county council. And I think we've done all that. So, in terms of where Lockhart is today and where we can reimagine Lockhart, it can only happen if we're all partnered together. County Council, the town of Lockhart, and Lockhart Power. And we're willing to do our part, and we hope you guys will consider the request we made.
So, the way we set this up, Adrena, thank you very much. Counselor, any more questions for Brian or for Adrena? The way I set this up was that they would make a presentation. We are getting ready to go into budget time, and we're going to talk about when these meetings are going to be. And part of what it's going to be is all our finance meetings, where we're talking about our future budget. This would be a perfect opportunity in a finance meeting as we go along to add this conversation in. So, we won't, I don't have an action on this plan. It was just to hear for information. And I want to apologize to everybody here because I know everybody's got questions. I have a few that I want to ask as well. But we will get those as we move into the finance section. And I'm sure we'll be asking y'all to come back to, Adrena and Brian.
Thank you.
All right. So, with that said, thank y'all for coming. And now we get to talk to Mr. Andrew Dobson with Halliday Schwartz &amp; Company, talking about our 2022, '23 budget, or audit, audit, not budget.
We don't want to talk about the budget. I'll leave that to end, in a lot smaller council meeting. It's good to see all y'all again tonight. You have a couple of things that I handed out before the meeting. You've got a letter, a three-page letter, I believe it is. You've got a summary page that's got nice little yellow highlights on it. And then you have two books. So, the little, teeny tiny skinny book, that's your federal funds audit. federal funds audit, if you want to call it that. It's the single audit. We'll talk about that. Y'all heard me talk about that for the past, I think, two or three years now. I think this is the fourth year in a row that you've had one. And then you have a thicker book. That's the actual financial statement audit. So the way we do the county's audit, just to refresh your memory, you have, your financial statement audit goes through all the numbers, internal controls over financial reporting, things of that nature that we'll talk about. Because you spend over $750,000 in federal expenditures, you also have a single audit. So that's the other piece to it. Sometimes you'll see those in the same book. Sometimes we'll do it separate. The county's requested to do those separate. So that's why you have two books. So the way I'm going to run this and do this tonight, we're going to go through the letter first, then I'm going to go through your opinions and things of that nature, the numbers. We can talk about how the county did. And I'm going to do it all off of this one sheet, so we're not flipping between two books through almost 100 pages. So what this letter is that y'all have tonight, it's called the final communication letter. It's a letter that we issued to you as council, and it's a summary with high overarching accounting principles and things that we're required to report to you. I'm going to hit some of the highlights, talk about some things we've talked about in the past and how those kind of came forward, and then things to look at in the future. If you have questions while I'm going, please stop me and ask me. It'd be easier to answer it while I'm talking about it rather than waiting till the end and then we go back. So the first thing in that three-page letter I want to talk about is the very last paragraph. So it talks about your significant accounting policies. And basically, this paragraph is saying that you didn't adopt any new significant accounting policies. Now, last year when I came up, we talked about leases and Gatsby 87 and the fact that had on your financial statements. Excuse me. And then I mentioned that you were going to do the exact same type of analysis in '22, '23 for your software subscriptions. So think about Microsoft Office, Adobe, any of those things that you don't purchase, but you sign a multi-year agreement to use. So we looked at all those, had discussions with Mr. Russell and Ms. Boggs and the people at the, ladies in the finance department about those. And we determined that there weren't any long-term software contracts that need to be reported. So you won't see that that was implemented. You have adopted that. So moving forward, if the county did decide, and the easy example I have in my head is accounting software. So if you decided to adopt a new accounting software, and you signed a three-year agreement, and that was $300,000, let's just say, that would be something you would see reported and implemented at that time. So that's just kind of, to give you that heads up. Going forward, the, the change that you'll see for '23, '24 that we'll be talking to Ms. Boggs about, Gatsby has clarified some of their fixed asset language. So right now, it's anything over $5,000. And so then I'm sitting at all of you with iPads. You think about iPads, computers, things of that nature, you're not capitalizing. That was never Gatsby's intent, because they said, hey, if you buy a whole bunch of assets at once that are like kind, that don't meet the threshold, we really did want you to do that. It's called a bulk purchase. So if you hear that or see that anywhere, that's what they're talking about. So if you go out and buy, and council, and, and, and Mr. Russell will come up with what that number looks like. It might be 50,000, it might be 100,000, 500,000, whatever that threshold will be. If you buy more assets than that level, then we'll start, you know, putting that in. So I mentioned that to you only, that your fixed assets policy is a county council policy, right, on how you do your finance. When that number becomes concrete, you will probably hear from us on saying you might want to put a policy in place from the council level, saying if we have a bulk purchase of assets, it's this level. So that's, that's why I want to mention that to you. So if it does come up, you've kind of heard about it on the front end, so it's not a, a foreign discussion. You look at the top of page two, we talk about significant accounting estimates. So there are things contained in the county's financial statements that are required an estimate. The first one's the allowance for doubtful accounts with taxes receivable. So as you can imagine, all the county, all the taxes that the county bills at the end of the year, June 30th, haven't been collected. So as a part of the audit, what Ms. Boggs does with talking to Mr. Russell and the whole finance team, they look at for reasonable collectability. What do we reasonably expect to collect? What is not going to be collectible of those? And they make an allowance, right? So instead of reporting all that as revenue, they might take 25% out and say, we expect to not collect 25% of this. So we review that and make sure that it's reasonable. The next one's depreciation expense. So what we're doing there is when new assets are added, we're making sure you're not putting a new police car on it 40 years. I don't know if we've ever seen a police car last that long. But you're also not putting, you know, a new EMS building or a detention center or what have you on it four years. We're making sure those useful lives are appropriate, because that is how the county then expenses that asset over that useful life to accurately represent the use of that asset throughout, you know, time moving forward. We reviewed all those. They were appropriate. The next three are your post-employment benefits. So OPEB, your net pension liability, and your landfill post-closure costs. Those all have actuarial valuations. So you send information off to the actuaries. They do all the stuff that they do. We're looking at it from the side of, is what you are giving the actuaries valid? Is it the correct information? Are you telling PIBA when your employees retire or when you hire them? Are they going into and out of those retirement systems at the correct time? So that's what we're looking at to validate that information. We're not trying to act as a, as an actuary. So we review all that, you know, as a part of our financial statement audit. The next one I want to pull out is the next to last paragraph, the uncorrected and corrected misstatements. So if the county had material adjustments that we were required to make as a part of the audit, we would be required to report them to you. So the first paragraph basically says that management has corrected anything that we found. So the county, if we found a journal entry, the county's posted those journal entries. And the second paragraph is saying that none of those were material. So if there was a $700,000 adjustment we had to make that we found with our audit procedures, we would tell you what that is, kind of give you a little explanation. But we had none of those. So those are two good things to be able to tell you. We had no disagreements with management in the last paragraph. So if, with Gatsby 96, like Sabida's I was just talking about, if we disagreed or had a disagreement with county management on how that should be implemented, we would be required to report that to county council, tell you how it was worked through and the conclusion that was reached. The top of the third page, there you have representation, representations requested from management. So as you can imagine, and some of you have been a part of this, with an audit, we asked a lot of questions. A lot of questions. All this letter is doing is it's basically reaffirming a lot of the stuff that we asked of the county in a letter that is signed by Mr. Russell and Ms. Boggs, affirming that what they told us is clear, accurate, true, and accurately represents the county as a whole. If you ever wanted to see that letter, you have every right to as a county council member. It's kind of like mentioned, it might put you to sleep if you try to read the whole thing. It's about seven pages. But you, you have that ability. They want us sometimes to put that whole thing with this letter. We thought it would be better if you just asked. So that, oh, well, then I'll talk, just management consultation with other accountants. Ms. Boggs had asked another CPA firm how to implement something, or their opinion on, on an accounting policy or procedure. She'd be required to tell us, and then we would report that to you in that paragraph. But we had nothing to report there. So it's, it's a pretty standard letter. There's a couple of key spots that I talked about there that if there was something to report, we would tell you. But we didn't have anything there. Any questions about that letter before I go on to talk about the numbers and opinions and things of that nature? All right. So I'm going to kind of go counter clockwise. You look at the top right-hand corner, we'll talk about your audit summary. The first thing is the financial statement opinion. So as you know, it, it sat through an audit presentation before. The big thing we issue is your audit opinion, right? And this year, you got an unmodified opinion, which is the highest and best opinion that we can provide. It means you had no material misstatements, that everything, when we looked at it and dug into the audited numbers, that they were all materially correct. The second two things that I'm going to talk about that you see there are the report on internal controls and the report on your major programs. So these are the two letters that are contained in that smaller book. The first one is the report on internal controls. So as a part of your financial statement audit, or excuse me, as far as your single audit, one of the things we're required to do, and we don't issue an opinion, but we're required to review your internal controls. Now, we do that as part of the audit. But when we're looking at these, we're looking at, okay, are your internal controls that are cash, accounts payable, receivables, revenue, fixed assets, your financial statements, are those all adequately designed, implemented, and operating well? So when we looked at all of those, we had no, we did not have any findings. So instead of issuing an opinion, we would tell you, okay, you have a material weakness here. You have a significant deficiency in this area. And you would see that contained in that little book in the back in the findings. But we had nothing there, which is a very good thing. That means you have sound internal controls, and they're all being implemented and operating as they should. The last one there is your major program opinion. So each year when we do a single audit, we look at the different federal expenditures of the county. And we look at how much you're spending in different areas, a couple of different criteria there. And we pick a major program or two, whatever is required. This year, it was the airport improvement programs. So you did a lot of work out at the airport this year with taxiways and the apron. If you go back three years ago, when you had your first single audit for quite some time, we did the airport back then. That was when you purchased the property. So it was kind of nice to see it come in full swing there. We do issue an opinion there. So what we're doing here is the federal government through OMB tells us up to six or seven different compliance criteria that we are required to test that are direct and material to that program. So we look at those. We make sure you materially comply. And you did. So you got an unmodified opinion there. So that means you met all the requirements of the compliance reporting for that airport improvement program this year. We also look at the internal controls that the county has over those various compliance areas. In looking at those, just like we do with the financial statements, we would then report a finding if we had a deficiency in internal control, but we didn't find any of those as well. That's, you'll see the findings reported, none. That's just specifically related to that one program. And, and just to give you, I think we tested right at 40% with that program. We tested right at 40% of your total federal expenditures this year. So looking at the top left-hand corner, you have the government-wide financial summary. I'm not going to dig too deep into this. And, and the reason is, the county has not two sets of books, but you've got two, two distinct sets of financial statements. You have your government-wide financials that put debt and fixed assets and that pension and OPEB, all the long-term stuff that's being paid far in the future. It, it takes those fund statements where the county really resides. And so you can see, you have assets of 76.9 million, deferred inflows of 3.7, or excuse me, 3.9, total liabilities of 33.9. The vast majority of that 33.9 is your long-term debt, your pension, your OPEB. There's some compensated absences in there, as well as your landfill post-closure. Deferred inflows of 3.3 million, giving you a net position of 43.45 million. If you want to equate this to business terms, this is more like full accrual retained earnings equity that you would have in, in your company that you're running on a day-to-day basis on accrual method. Current year activity summary there through the middle, you can see all of the county's different major funds. So you have the general fund, then you have the library. So the, the library gets rolled into the county's audit. It has its own audit as well. So we reference that in your audit report. You have your special revenue funds, debt service, and capital projects. So this is really more, if you want to think cash basis, 30, 60, 90 days after year-end. That's what the current year fund financials are really looking into. So really, you want to look at the general fund, because the general fund is where the county's unrestricted, day-to-day operational funding comes in and goes out. If it's not coming in through somebody like Lockhart Power, or through a grant, or a bond funding, or set aside for certain capital projects, that it's just primarily a lot of your salaries, you know, your day-to-day operations, that's going through the general fund. So if we look at your total general fund this year, you had total revenues of $21,876,000. That was up about $2.7 million from the prior year. And it was 3.7, almost $3.8 million more than you had budgeted. Total expenditures this year were $21,207,000, almost 208,000. That was a 1.6, almost 1.7 million dollar increase from the prior year. But it was 1.5, almost, it was 1.555 million less than you had budgeted. So what we're seeing, okay, revenues greater, expenditures less. Tells me you've got conservative budgeting, and you're fiscally responsible with the funds you're receiving. You're doing your fiscal responsibility, your financial diligence of stewarding the funds that are coming to you, whether it's grants, property taxes paid by, you know, the individuals or the companies contained within the district. You're doing your job to make sure you're spending them as you should throughout the year. You had some other financing sources and uses, a 587,000, giving you a total net fund balance increase this year of just over 1.2 million dollars. So that's really good. Looking over in the top right-hand, or the, the right-hand side under the notes column, this will give you just an idea of where your fund balance stands. So current year expenditures of that 21.2 million, your fund balance is 54.5% of that. Current year budget of 22.7, that's 50%. Your subsequent budget, so the budget you've passed for '23, '24, that you're currently working through, 49.75% of that. The one thing I really want to point out, and if you were in this presentation last year, we talked about collateralization, that all got corrected. So you will see that in the single audit. We talked about that. I think you were actually about $3 million over collateralized this year. But that was strategic. We all probably saw what interest rates did both on the lending side, but also on the investment side. And the finance team and the finance department strategically placed funds into the county's allowed investments at the local government investment pool, making anywhere from 4.5% to 5.5%. So if you look, and that's the big change, the reason I'm pointing this out, this is the big change I saw. Your investment earnings were budgeted at 36,000. They were 93.6 a year ago. They were 1.1 million this year. And that was making sure you were stewarding the money and making it work for the county. So if you look at your fund balance increase of 1.2 million dollars in your investment earnings, you were able to use the money that you had and still put essentially that investment money into fund balance, which is laying the groundwork to be able to do the things the county wants going forward and in the future. Just to kind of quickly go back up to the top, you'll look at debt service. So you've got $698,000 of debt service fund balance. That's where tax revenues coming in. Tax, debt service payments are going out. So I don't have the number right here in front of me. It is in the book. But, but you will be able to make obviously your debt service payments in the future. And then 1.668, almost 1.7 million dollars of capital projects money. That's money that the county has set aside, either through council requesting to have it set aside. I know y'all did that, with some of the money that was there for last year, as well as various projects that have been approved, setting aside that money to be able to do various capital projects going forward in the future. So all in all, it was a really good year. Tax revenues continue to increase. You know, total revenues are increasing. You're going after good grants. You're, you're using your grant funds wisely. You know, total revenues are increasing, you're going after good grants, you're, you're using your grant funds wisely, complying with, you know, the single audit requirements that you have there, and also being a good steward of your funds, spending less than your budget, not, not intentionally, I mean, intentionally, but, you know, making sure that you're not overspending for things. That's why you have the, the solid procurement policy in place to make sure you're wisely using the funds, you know, that you have been entrusted with. So are there any questions? Now I kinda blew through that.
Dang, that's a good budget. I mean, that's a good, that's, that is a good audit. And I, I give one hundred percent y'all the, the reason behind that, that and staff, with making sure that we follow what we're supposed to do. If we do what we're supposed to do, that's the kinda results you're expecting.
Thanks, sir. Well, I appreciate it. My name and number at the top, if you start reading this, you can stay awake. If you get up putting up like seven or eight pensions, can't sleep at night. It's all about how the pension plan's set up that'll put you right to sleep. Seriously, we appreciate being able to come out here and, and do this audit, work with Mr. Russell and Bob.
And, and we, we enjoy working with you and your staff too, Andrew. It's, it's, this is, uh, it, it is a lot of work, but y'all make it painless, I guess you could say.
We try to make it as painless as we can. And we, we understand there's a little bit. Nobody likes seeing us walk in the door, but.
Well, and, and while we're at that, there's one other person in this room that, that is a part of the success too, and that's our treasurer, Ms. Debbie, and we, we've gotta make sure that we, we recognize her as well. Because, uh, anything that we take receipts of, it's got to go through her hands. And, uh, she's very much a part of this, and, and helping we made sure that we got money to the state pool, and making sure our collateralization issues were, um, taken care of. And, uh, I'll tell you, the bank really came, they, they hit a home run with you. They made sure you had plenty this year, didn't they? Thank you, Andrew.
You're welcome.
All right, so the next item we have on the agenda, uh, Sheriff, you might as well come on up. We, we do know that, um, the sheriff has had, uh, previous issues with his fleet. And, um, we just happened to find two vehicles that he was gonna be asking for them in a few months anyways through our budget process, and he found two vehicles on the lot that he can go procure. And so Sheriff, I'm gonna let you have at it.
Okay. Um, basically, well, you know, we got five new vehicles last year, and I was gonna ask, request another five this upcoming budget. I talked with Chevrolet, love Chevrolet the other day, and of course, there's a shortage there. The, the prices are going up on these trucks, and Tahos so much that, that they're not even gonna try to even get a contract to, to sell those. So we're, and it's gonna be as short as vehicles again next year. They have two of the, the, uh, truck Chevrolet trucks on the lot like we purchased before, pursuit rated. So, um, I still have four people that's actually driving vehicles over a hundred fifty thousand miles on them, some up close to two hundred thousand. So I just, I, I wanna come and request that we go ahead and, and purchase these vehicles if we can, while we can get our hands on them. They're gonna sell them to us the same time we pay for them in July, which is, is a good deal, because, you know, everything's going up, so, yeah, there was an increase in vehicles. But it's just like the Tahos, we were, we were paying close to fifty thousand dollars for now. They quoted one this time, it's seventy-one thousand dollars. So, you know, that's twenty thousand dollar increase. So I, I'm just saying, if we grab what we can at the price that, uh, that we paid in July, I, I think that'd be a, a good deal for the county. And, you know, maybe we can work something out later on next bunch of years, just ask for three, and, and see what we can, maybe a different type vehicle. We might have to switch vehicle types. So as long as it's pursuit rated and we can use it on the road, that's, that's what we're looking for. So I just respectfully request that we go ahead and purchase these two vehicles. They have them on hold for us pending your decision. So, um, if I can do it and get it, I appreciate it. If I can't, I understand.
Well, and I, I think the sheriff made a, uh, it, it's a good financial decision on his part. We can buy the trucks, the exact thing that we did eight months ago. And it's a light vehicle. And, uh, when he told me seventy thousand dollars for a Tahoe, I went, hmm. So, um, you know, and, and the other side to this is if we don't procure now, if we go out and wait and order, you could be six, eight, nine months in, in vehicle deliveries. So, um, so y'all heard the sheriff's request to do, I have a motion on the floor. I have a motion by Councilman Smith, Councilperson Smith, and second by Councilman Sinclair. Are there any questions?
The statement to reinforce the fact that these will be subtracted from next year's.
And, and we're in good shape now with the vehicles, where we can actually get use of and rotate them without them being completely bore out, and, and get some revenue generated back from the sale of those vehicles. These trucks hold their value, you know they do. So, uh, I think in, in the long run, if we get on a, a rotation instead of having to purchase everything at one time, we're in good shape now. If we can just maintain now, I think we'll be better off as a county in the future.
So are there any other comments? Any other questions? Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, like sign. And, um, well, wait a minute before, we all have voted, so, but the funds will come out of our capital fund. Council agree to that, correct? Okay, all right. So do I need to back up? Let, let me have that, since, now I know where funding is, let's cover ourselves. We know where funding's coming from. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, like sign. And as unanimous vote, money comes out of our capital. All right, Sheriff.
Thank y'all very much.
We'll get you something, um, tomorrow, and we'll go ahead and see if we can't, go ahead and get them delivered.
Okay, thank y'all.
I'm gonna get your slums shot, how about that?
All right, um, we had, um, an executive session last month, and I communicated to y'all that I had, um, two employees that had announced that they were going to retire at the end of this fiscal year. One was Ms. uh, Lorraine Bevis, who's our manager of delinquent tax, and the other is Ms. Ann Boggs, our finance director. And we just sit over here and just, just cheerleading her and, and patted her on the back, and then now I gotta go and tell y'all formally and everybody else that she's gonna leave at the end of June. I told y'all that I wanted y'all to have advance notice that I was going to come, and I was going to ask for y'all to allow me to go ahead and advertise and hire for these two positions so that I could get employees in and begin to train them with our existing employees. I believe we can cover most of this with existing funds if we have. If not, I can come back and identify where that funding source will be. If I say we get later into budget year, it's causing us an issue. But at this time, I would like for, um, to put on the table as a motion that you allow me to hire, uh, to publish, um, promote, advertise, and then to hire a delinquent tax manager and finance director. I have a motion from John Glenn.
So you presented it as a motion, I was gonna kinda correct you, so you can.
I can't. I have a motion from him. I have a second from, uh, Ms. Carolyn Rufford. Are there any questions? Any questions? Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, like sign. And it's unanimous. Okay, um, at this point in time, we have a request from, um, Ms. Julie Jones, is that correct? But Laurie? La- Laurie Jones, I'm sorry, um, to make a presentation to council on, um, a waiver or an extension of the deadline for an ag exemption. Ms. Jones, if you'd like to come on up and, and share with council what your issues are, you can stand at the table, please.
Welcome, everyone. Hello, everyone. Nice to see you all. So I moved in from Florida. I came up to pay some taxes that we had, uh, and was surprised to see a huge tax bill that I was not prepared to get. And, and so when I explained to the gentleman that I, I had no idea I was supposed to fill out a tax form, I've never looked a rule before, um, didn't know that that was something that I had to do. Not, not only was it not given to me during the sale of our property, um, I just didn't know about it. There was no, no way. Uh, we did live in Florida, uh, traveling in order to get to here. And so I asked him, I was like, is there any, anything I can do about this? It's a five thousand dollar difference from where it was, so it was startling to me. And he said, well, you'd have to come to council, but we'd have, you know, you, people lie, basically. All day long, people come up here with a sob story. But I have ten months of, um, correspondence with the, uh, the mail service that we used as we traveled around, um, showing poor, poor service. I mean, complaint after complaint after complaint, um, to the point where she lost her franchise. And I got a letter from the franchise people last night to show that, and showing that I had to also switch over to get a whole new mail service. It was just, it was a nightmare. And so I'm just here seeing, is there anything that anybody can do? I mean, I have documentation, if anybody would like to read them, they're brief, but plentiful. It was just a, a bad situation all the way around. It is a huge difference in price that, again, we didn't, we didn't know. We just didn't know. And I know that everybody is at the mercy of mail. So am I. And so when I, you know, when I just tell you that the service was horrible, it was, you know, multiple tags bought every year for our vehicles. It was just a horrible situation. And I just wanted to come and present this to you, if you all wanted to take a look at it, and if not, I appreciate your time.
I also had, um, our assessor here, um, Jake, if there were any questions from council related to this. I just didn't know if council had any questions.
What's the big, the real difference? What's the option?
Well, Ms., we had, uh, she purchased this property in five, six, or twenty-two, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. She was mailed ag use application, we print them out, batch print them every year. They were printed to one of twenty-three for this year, it was mailed to the Florida address. The reminder letter was mailed to that same address, eight, one of twenty-three. The tax bill for twenty-two that they had that was paid was for nine dollars and thirteen cents. Everybody take a deep breath. Her tax bill for this year, including a ten percent penalty, is five thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy cents.
And the dates will correspond, because I had to switch mail service in March.
And basically, because we didn't get this ag use application returned, she's paying on market value, which was, is basically her sale price of that property, for the sixteen acres. Now, let's say S C forty-three, two twenty, section three A, that was, should be in y'all's packet. The governing body may extend the time for filing upon a showing satisfactory to it that the person had a reasonable cause for not filing on her before the first penalty date, which would have been January the sixteenth of this year. I talked to the auditor, basically, if council is willing to grant her this extension on the deadline, her tax bill will be ten dollars and seven cents.
And I've already filled out the paperwork as soon as he told me, and I appreciate your kindness, 'cause I was just so upset that day. I was so upset that day. But I, I, I mean, I filled out the paperwork immediately, and, you know, and I understand that people try to escape, but I promise. I mean, if you all would just take a moment to read these emails of the multiple thi-, I mean, just the madness that I was dealing with. I, I, I would love for you to see them.
Yes, my only concern.
What's council's options?
Council can grant her an extension or, or not, as the council will do.
Let, and, and let me say this, this coming to council for a tax bill, this is not something that county council is used to seeing. This is only for ag use situations.
Right. As far as I know, this is the only exemption state tax code grants the option for council to extend a deadline.
Correct. And I, I just want y'all.
To an individual.
I just wanna make sure that's clear, because I don't want everybody saying we're gonna come to tax, to, to the county council, but we don't like our tax bill. But this is only for ag use. Councilman Flood, you, you were going to say something.
My, my concern is precedent setting.
Yes, and I understand that. I mean, like I'm saying, I, I, you know, I'm at the mercy of, of the mail like everyone else, and I just didn't know. I mean, it was a single page, I'd have filled it out, I guarantee it, filled it out the same day he asked me to. So I appreciate your time and.
Was that the only means of contact you had with her is by mail?
Yes. Uh, we don't collect phone numbers, we don't play email addresses.
I know my twenty, twenty-one tax bill never came to my house once.
I mean, yeah.
And for eleven months, my mail has been sent, and it still is being sent to an address I've never lived at. And I've been finding it with a post office for eleven months. Not one piece of mail comes to my house that goes to an address I've lived.
I'll say, Ms. Jones is not the only person that complains about the mail service. But all we have is an address printed on the deed at the time of transaction. And not to fuss about, y'all folks in Lockhart, I love y'all, but we get plenty of deeds that come in with a street address for Lockhart. As y'all know, nobody's got a mailbox down there. It's all P O boxes. So it's all the time we're having to track down stuff like that.
But those are not agriculture that were fit, just rolled.
No. Well, like I say, this, we mailed this out to that address. As far as I know, I don't have any record where it was returned, unable to forward, anything like that. The reminder went out also, um, let's say, I understand, I sympathize with you with the mail.
No, I understand too. I understand that it's just an awkward situation, but, like I'm saying, you see February, I mean, the dates are February, March, where I had to switch. I got a letter from the company, that lady lost her franchise. I mean, it was just, it's just one of those situations that nobody's at fault, but it's a huge check. It's a huge check.
Council, council has heard, um, from, from Ms. Jones and of our tax. I'll go ahead and call for the question. Would council? Make a motion, make, make a motion to, um, extend the deadline to take care of Ms. Jones. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I, I have a second from Council Sinclair. Um, motion was made by, um, Councilman Bright. Any more questions?
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, I wouldn't do this for everything. It's, uh, it's agriculture. Our agriculture land's being attacked, not just in Union County, but across the country. We don't, I wanna protect our agriculture, anything we can do for our ag land, so, yeah. That was my, that was my main, main reason.
Again, we'll, we'll go to my objection. Uh, we're, we're setting the precedence here. You gotta remember that. Um, if you vote in favor of this, then you have set the future that you have to. Anybody that has two acres can call, call for a, uh, ag exemption.
Not two acres.
Not only this.
But, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but I was, I wanna put that out. It's, it's not two acres, you gotta have more than that.
What does the state law say?
It's five acres of timber, or at least ten acres of pasture or crop land.
Normally, I wouldn't be in favor of it, but since she has the documentation from where she hasn't been receiving her mail, that changes my opinion on it.
Well, I have a motion and a second. Do I have any more questions?
Um, have you, um, since have you straightened everything out as far as your mail?
We paid the taxes. We, we, we are law-abiding citizens. We're looking forward to be a member of Union County. We really are. I, I, you know, I'm not, we're not troublemakers, but all of the dates that he said, I was like, oh my God, I gotta get through all of this. So I just wanted to come in and at least take my chances.
Then I will say, she has been granted the ag use exemption back for twenty twenty-four. So she's getting that back for twenty-four, which corrected the address to the address in Jonesville. So she'll be getting mail at that Jonesville address now.
And I'm at the post office in Jonesville, that's where we get all our mail currently, so hopefully no more flubs. I never have to fill it out again. It's a one-time deal.
I have a motion from Councilman Bright. I have a second from David Sinclair. Are there any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, like sign. It's unanimous vote.
I love you all.
We'll extend it.
Thank you so much. You guys are so kind. Thank you.
Okay, um, we, we've heard from our sheriff. Um, we've got Ms. Debbie here, would either elected official like the same thing to council?
I can decide if the mail bill is bad. I mean, I have for the last three years, you wouldn't believe the mail that's come by. And some of the people live there still. I mean, I know personally they live, so I turn my attention again, it'll go. But I mean, mail has been a really bad, and it's not only Union, it's all over, so. They, we talked about it in our, the SCAP meeting we had last week that I had with the town. That was one thing. And I asked him, I said, why don't y'all bring a postal hire-up person to one of the meetings that we can discuss with? 'Cause it's, you know, I know a lot of people don't get there as luckily, you know, we, we, we're able to do a little bit with some of the stuff. Not that, but, you know, as far as when you pay it, we're able to, you know, kinda help. And we try.
Sheriff, you got anything else?
I'm good.
All right, we don't have any other elected officials here. And I've got, um, two readings here. The next, um, item will be second reedow for a fee a little taxes for project. for Project Tiger. You have the full text in front of you. There may be a couple of minor changes that will be highlighted and sent out if needed on the third reading. We still have attorneys working on this, but this is, I'm gonna say ninety-nine point forty-four. It passed first reading, and so I will ask, do I have an entertained motion for a second reading? I have a motion from Councilman Flood, a second from Councilperson Smith. Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, like sign? And it is unanimous. We also have a multi-county industrial park agreement for Project Tiger. I know I repeat this, but I feel like it's worthy of repeating. We are in an agreement with Spartanburg County and we get one percent off of all of their multi-park agreements. They in light turn get one percent off of ours. And this is entering Project Tiger into that ordinance. Do I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
I have a motion from Councilperson Sinclair. I have a second from Councilman Glenn, was that I heard first?
It's not.
Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it is unanimous. So we'll move over to the supervisors' report. I know I sent this out and I don't wanna, I don't wanna go too long on this, but we've had a lot of stuff going on. One of the items that is not on, on the list or in the supervisors' report is that we are continuing to work with Spartanburg County on our boundary line issue with Spartanburg County, Union County. To the point that we actually even had the assistant county manager for Spartanburg County here on Friday. We had a really good meeting, Representative Gillum and myself did. Basically, nobody is contesting the fact that we have another line created that allows everybody to stay where they're at. Spartanburg County has already had one resolution done. We're having a second resolution created, it should be on our agenda in March. And once that's completed, Spartanburg County and us will share the cost of having this new line surveyed in. Once that's done, of course, that'll be adopted, but it'll all be sent to the governor's office. The governor's office will pull a commission together and they'll approve it. And everything's going the way it's supposed to go to keep everybody that was in Union in Union, everybody that was in Spartanburg in Spartanburg. That's what the citizens wanted and that's what we're trying to do is to make sure that happens. The South State Bank across the street, where everything is ready for a C.O. with the exception of the elevator being inspected and then having a certificate of occupancy inspection there. The elevator cannot be inspected by L.L.R. for about two weeks. I've sent an email asking if they can do anything a little quicker. This elevator, they've been trying to get it installed for six months, so I'm a little bit frustrated at all process. But once we get in the building, we still have some additional work that's got to be done. I'm looking at truly a move-in date of April the first. That's when we can start taking ownership and start putting, setting up. If we want to do storage first, let's get all our storage material in and then we'll phase in who's going in next. The assessor will go first, we'll do computer checks. Then it'll either be admin or it'll be the combination of treasurer, delinquent tax, and auditor. And again, everybody who moves in, first thing that's gonna happen is it's gonna be computer checks. We wanna make sure that everybody can communicate, especially between the treasurer, the auditor, with the assessor, and delinquent tax. We've gotta maintain that level of communication. So we've still got a little work there, but it's okay. Sent y'all a couple of pictures this week. The pad for the jail is poured. They started at four-thirty Friday morning and they began to pour concrete. Buffalo Mill Property, we do have a report back on the property. Both myself and Vice Chair Sinclair have been kinda reading over that, especially since he is the person that represents that area, I promise all council's gonna get it. I just wanted to make sure that everything that we wanted in it was in it before we put it out. When I send it to you, I will send it to you on e-file, I will not print it out because I promise you that looks that thick. We do know that there is lead paint and asbestos in the towels. We do know that there are PCBs and other hydrocarbons in the soil. So we've just gotta go through that and look at it and start that process. We've also got a meeting scheduled for council on February the twenty-ninth. We'll see if y'all are available, five-thirty, Main Street Junction, to meet with the city of Union and hear a presentation from the COG and the people that did the testing with us, with all involved, both the city council and us.
So we're setting that as a meeting?
That will be a meeting, yes, sir.
In what time?
Five-thirty. Mill pond improvements, we do know that Rogers and Calcott are getting ready to send us a set of plans to go ahead and start bidding on. It will not include any sedimentation ponds, we're gonna have to deal with that at a later time. We've got to move on with the project at hand. They're gonna offer some options to the Army Corps. They are still allowed to be able to go and start work on the pond. We're just gonna have to do the sedimentation pond at the last part. Goldville Fire Station's back underway, it's being rebid as we speak. We just had to add the correct federal government language in it since this is a commerce grant. They had to have some certain documentation in it that wasn't in it originally. So I believe the bid opening for that's going to be March the twenty-eighth, but it went out to bid yesterday afternoon. Gateway signs, we have three of four easements signed to put in new county gateway entrance signs. We've got one more easement that we're trying to track down, the owner, we've made contact, we just can't see to physically make them so they could sign the document, we're still working on that. And I'm hoping to be able to go out to bid with that sometime next week. If you've noticed, we've had a number of vehicles already have Union County logos on them and we'll continue working that. As they bring them in for oil change and service, we're going ahead and logoing our operational vehicles so everybody knows who they are. To me, that's just very, very important. So really, the only other thing that I have pressing, and I've given each of y'all this, we're gonna start our budget session next month. And what I did is I kinda provided in calendar form some dates. Now, none of these dates are in concrete, these dates are all up for y'all to determine if they fit and how they fit your schedule. And I know when I originally created the date, it did dawn on me that Councilman Flood works a lot of Tuesdays. So I thought I'd go ahead and say, okay, we need to move some of these around, especially since a lot of these are finance committee meetings. We would need to have our finance committee chair there, so it'd be important.
The first one's the one I have a problem with, can we just move it to Monday, the twenty-fifth?
Yes, we can move it to Monday, okay.
Because that was the twenty-sixth, so moving it to twenty-fifth. And I go into work thirsty, I'll just ask for the ones off in April.
Okay. Everything else look okay to y'all?
Location was, or do you want me to use the grand jury room for these dates or are we gonna look at it at that location?
I think I want to look at a different location, but I'll let y'all know where that is. It'll be somebody somewhere close, but I want to be able to sit around a table, I think y'all would rather do that too. But we've gotta have room for anybody who may want to come and listen, so I'm okay with that. But this just didn't, this isn't convenient for a PowerPoint presentation. What you laughing about, Andrew? You did a good job with it. The rest of these dates look okay though, y'all?
Yep.
We may actually be in the new administrative building by then.
We might be. Don't hold your breath.
I'm not.
So the.
Yeah, I've got one question, we got second reading before we're done with presentations?
That is, that is correct, it's just the way it lays out. What my goal, Councilman Bright, is to have to use the entire operations budget put in.
Yeah, I would like more. I'm just gonna say I'd like, I would like to have second, third reading after presentations. I don't want to feel rushed, but.
They're only, those readings are only in kind of filo agreements.
I understand that.
That it's not setting anything in stone.
I don't want to feel rushed at third reading. I want to have time to take everything in, look everything over and make a decision. I don't want to feel rushed at second, at third reading. I have a problem with doing second, I'm not trying to be hard, get along with you, I promise I'm not trying to start from doing second reading before presentations are done.
Could you not swap it for the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, be careful with me. What are you doing?
I was just asking, could we put the?
The only, the only items that I had was the outside agencies, and this is what we did last year. We met with outside agencies after we had the scope of all the other budget information done. But now if we need to move that from the twenty-first to the seventh of May, we can do that.
You talking about outside agencies?
That's all it is. Second reading will have everything.
Outside agencies?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no, never mind, disregard what I said. I didn't catch it, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll have, first reading is in April, it's entitled only and it's the budget ordinance. Then what we'll do is, we, wait a minute, hold on, we gotta, bless you. What my goal, what my goal on the twenty-fifth is to have you, and I may not have it all, but I should have ninety percent of it, if not all of it, what I want to do is present to you the operations side of Union County, everybody that works for me.
Yeah, I overlooked that, and that's fine, as long as you know the outside agencies.
Then the second one is going to be after first reading will be from elected and appointed officials. And we may not need to meet with them because I have all their requests too. And it will actually be in some of my presentations. So, you know, I'll ask for them to be here, if it's something that they need above and beyond, I definitely want them to have an audience with you. The second reading after that is only outside agencies on the twenty-fourth. I have the twenty-eighth of April, or excuse me, twenty-eighth of May and the fourth of June. These are set up on an as-needed basis. You might need one, you may need both, you may not need any. But my goal is, is that I didn't, I wanted to make sure everybody was fine before we had third reading. June's meeting is moved to the eighteenth because the eleventh is primary. And that's been a practice, I'm not doing it because I won't do that, it's been a practice of council, not to have council meetings during primary night.
Second reading on the fourteenth, and third reading on the eighteenth, that's my last one.
Now, what we're doing different this year is, is I'm not putting, I'm not doing anything with outside agencies. I'm gonna let council handle that, just because it's, I just feel like that's the best thing to do, to allow y'all to have, I know last year I was trying to get a budget out and I heard, I heard what y'all did. I made a proposal and y'all accepted that. I think y'all need to have a little bit more involvement with that. So with the exception of the twenty-fifth, everything else is good. Alright, so we've covered a lot of bases tonight, did I miss anything?
We have board appointees at the night.
We do not have the board appointee on the agenda because we only had one person that actually applied. And we're going to re-advertise so we can do that next month. We would like to have, we've got more openings than just that one person, we need to have some applicants. So we did not put that on there and the gentleman that was going to speak to us tonight and bring some concerns, he said he was just gonna send us a letter and I'll get it to y'all. So. We have a motion to adjourn made by Ms. Smith. I have a second from Ms. Rutherford, all those agreeing, pack up.